Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our February 2nd Board of County Commissioners meeting. We'd like to start the meeting today with an invocation by Chaplain Elsie Campbell, Jr., from Nettles Island Church, and Elsie will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Gary Boerman from the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary. Thank you. Please stand.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is it on?
Tap on it.
No.
She does AV on the side.
I need a good sound person out of the church. Not only a pastor of Nettles Island, but chaplain with Treasure Cove Seawind's funeral home. So that makes me three to get ready and four to go. Would you join me as we pray together? Father, today we come to you on this cool day. And Father, I'm grateful that we live in a place where most days are pretty cool, whether the temperature is or not. We are grateful that we have a governor who has used good common sense, and we thank you for citizens who also are able to make personal choices, to be very careful. Lord, in this room today, we thank you for our county attorney. She keeps us legal. We thank you for our county administrator. She keeps us organized. And we thank you for our county commissioners, who have committed a good portion of their lives now to taking care of, observing, researching, contemplating, and making decisions for the welfare of the people of Martin County. I pray your blessings on each one of them and all of the staff that works with them. And Father, today, I pray that you would give wisdom to everyone that speaks, that they would not speak without having thought through what they are about to say. And I pray that the decisions made today will affect, for our community, an opportunity to increase the goodness, the beauty, the resiliency of this county. So thank you, Father, for what we are about to experience, even though we're not sure what it might be. So we're trusting you for a meeting today that would benefit each of us and would honor you, for you know everything about it all. For we pray these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic with which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of the Lord, justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Today's agenda, we have one additional item, Consent Number 13, Request by Forte Properties to Release Units of Title and Rescind Development Orders Related to the Crystal Cove Project, a minor development. We have a request to withdraw Consent Number 10, Acceptance of Utility Easement from 41164 Jack James LLC to allow for water, sewer, and a lift station services. We have one preset. We have the Indian River Lagoon Council Executive Director Dwayne DeFreeze here to give us a presentation and update. And with that, I will...
Chair, move approval of the agenda with the additional consent agenda, Item 13, Request Withdraw Consent 10, and the remainder of the agenda.
Great. We have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor? Aye. And motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are going to move on. I have some public comment speaker forms. If you would like to speak during public comment, please fill out one of these speaker forms and give that to the bailiff. Our first speaker this morning is going to be Karen Ripper, and Karen will be followed by Blair Wickstrom. Good morning.
My name is Karen Ripper, and I'm the president and CEO of the Council on Aging in Martin County, located at the Kane Center. We're a private, non-for-profit agency that's been in existence since 1974, caring for the most vulnerable seniors in our community. And speaking of vulnerable seniors, we now have, and this is 2018 statistics, 9% of our seniors who are over the age of 80. That's about, that is 14,274 seniors living in Martin County. 85-plus is 5% of our total population, 7,746. So with that background in mind, and often, these seniors try to, most of the seniors that are this age try to live in their own home for as long as possible, and we see it as our duty as the lead agency for aging in Martin County to help them do that before they have to go to an assisted living facility, or maybe a skilled nursing facility, which is a higher level of care and much more expensive. And they don't get to see their families as much as they would like to, especially in time of a pandemic. So with that background in mind, I'm sure you're aware, at the end of last year, that the U.S. Food and Drug Administration gave emergency use authorization to two vaccines, Pfizer and Moderna, to inoculate people against COVID. I imagine you are equally aware that obtaining a vaccine seems akin to winning the lottery these days in the state of Florida. The situation is frustrating, to say the least, but not unique to our community or even our state. Countries across the globe are struggling to develop efficient systems to vaccinate their populations. With the prospect of the vaccine in sight, even if elders are finding it difficult to obtain one for themselves, it is easy to fall into a false sense of security. Remaining vigilant for all these months is exhausting. It's been a year, almost. We will all want nothing more than to return to our normal lives. However, in many ways, we are in the most dangerous era of this pandemic. New more contagious variants have emerged, one of which was found in Martin County. Public spaces are becoming much more crowded as our seasonal residents and visitors travel to Florida to escape the brutal winters. Most of all, it is important to remember that whether you receive the vaccine or not, our local and national populations are still far from the minimum 70% required to achieve herd immunity. Herd immunity means you must have vaccines in the mix to achieve herd immunity. In the meantime, there are simple steps you can take. Wear a mask. Consider upgrading to two-layer mask. Minimize nonessential trips, outings, and shopping. Stay at least six feet. Don't socialize, unmask, or indoors. Wash your sanitized hands frequently. Back in January, or early January, we, I'm sorry.
Sorry, your time's up.
I know, but I just want to say, for those seniors...
Yeah, that's a 15-second warning.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
So back in January, we earned, because we're a Florida shots provider and our day medical center, we did receive a small amount of vaccines. And since that time, we have reached, achieved to receive more, to help the most vulnerable seniors in our community. And this is important, because you all are hearing about not being able to navigate the websites, not having family to do that, et cetera, et cetera. So I want to give one phone number. So if anyone in the community knows of someone who really needs help in doing this, we will help navigate through that issue.
Is this it, then? Karen, your time's up.
223-78...
Wait, one second. One second.
Go ahead. First, I interrupted her, and then Commissioner Campy has a question.
Sure.
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, I had asked Ms. Ripper to come. I think she emailed each of us some very important information, and I had recommended that she come to the commission meeting. I would like, if it's okay with you, Madam Chair, that she, as the head of the Council on Aging, I think it's different than just a traditional public comment. Under the circumstances, she has information that I think most of us have been receiving emails from panicked residents or family members on how they can hear this information. And I know that we try to stick to three minutes, but the information Ms. Ripper is giving as the lead of our Council on Aging, I think, would warrant a little additional time. And if I might ask her a question, is if you had more time, what would you have said?
I just want to say that I have one phone number to call for people that need help in the community that are 80-plus. We're trying to focus on the most vulnerable, because we could be on the phone all day with everybody who need help. But these are, what, 15,000 people that need help? Call 223-7845, and that is our navigator, who will help in that situation. We do have a limited number of vaccines for this population, and we'll be working on that. What the Florida Health Department has been very helpful in helping us getting additional vaccines, and through our day medical center, we'll be administering them. So we, go to our website if they can, but remember to call that number. That's it. 223-7845.
Thank you. Ms. Krizda, can we add that number to? I know a lot of people go to our website, and the phone number is very helpful for that population, because I have heard from quite a few that navigating the website for the publics or for others is difficult for some, not for everybody. My parents are in their mid-80s, and they're computer literate, but we're trying to reach all of the most vulnerable. And I like very much the fact that you're starting at 80 and above versus 65 and above. So that's why I thought it was important that we hear the rest of her presentation. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Karen. We appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Blair Wickstrom, followed, Blair will be followed by Mike Connor.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the time to be able to speak to you today. And again, I'm Blair Wickstrom, publisher of Florida Sportsman Magazine, the largest fishing magazine in the state of Florida. We are headquartered here in Martin County. I wanted to begin by thanking you guys for your recent capital improvements that you approved last month for your capital improvements for boat ramps and docks. It was a significant amount of money, with $800,000 going to sand sprit and $500,000 for 2022, going to the sewer causeways. So that's important and provides vital access to our waters. Unfortunately, not everybody owns a boat. And 22 years ago, we moved here because of the fishing community from Miami, and it was front-page news for a fishing magazine to come to an area. Not every community would have that kind of reception for a fishing magazine, but Stewart, Martin County, did. And I'm here today to try to maintain a connection to that community, to that idea that the outdoors, the water, the fishing is important to this community. And so when you talk about restricting access to anglers, it's restricting access to a culture, to a community. And I just, again, wanted to come today to talk to you about making the right decision. It's not always the easy decision. The right decisions are normally hard decisions. It's easy to close something and to end it and just to put it off. It's harder to make it work. It's harder to come up with a decision that is the right thing. And that's what I'm hoping that we can do regarding access to anglers on our public access bridges, properties, and other access points. So I appreciate your time. I appreciate what you're doing with the boat ramps, and I encourage you to look at equitable situation with access to bridge fishing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mike Connor, and Mike will be followed by Captain Rufus Wakeman.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks again. Mike Connor, Indian River Keeper. This is my third trip to talk to you about the Jensen Beach Causeway closure, and I'm hoping three times is a charm. At this point, I'm wondering whether anybody in the commission has spoke to DOT yet. Mr. John Deemer, I had left some contact information on January 3rd at the last commission meeting, and I'll be happy to forward his information. Again, DOT is willing to take the signs down if we go into agreement with you, the county, Indian River Keeper, volunteers who are in this room that are happy to help educate and police the bridge. At this point, I'd love to see it become an agenda item, number one. I'd like to know, I believe it would take one commissioner to make a motion on that. We hope you will this morning, but I'm not going to take a lot more time. I've spoken to you, this is the third time. Others in the room have comments to make about this, and I hope this will be the agenda item at the next meeting, so we can get this bridge opened and make it work. I don't believe in layering a law on top of an old law that has not been enforced. That would be the littering law. So let's look at that angle and get the access open. I appreciate your time again. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Captain Rufus Wakeman, followed by Mike Holliday.
I wish he could see my smile. All right. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to address you all here in the Martin County Commission. My name is Captain Rufus Wakeman. I've been a Martin County resident since 1983. When I moved up here to study offshore marine technology at FIT in Jensen Beach, I lived in the dormitory at the college. I didn't have a boat. I fished off the East Mosquito Bridge at the Jensen Causeway a lot. We fish, the fish we caught there, especially the snook, and the memories we made are priceless. Over the years, after I got a boat and started guiding here in Jensen Beach, we would still fish off the bridge at night and around it during the day. It's an extremely productive spot due to the current that moves under the bridge. Once the net ban went into effect in '95, and the Pompano made a comeback, the bridges all over Martin County started to get more people fishing them for food fish. Public access to good water and especially productive water is imperative. These bridges have been fished by the public for over 60 years. To deny people the right to pursue happiness in the procurement of food for their families, well, it's just wrong. People need these places, not only for food and recreation, but in these troubled times, And well-being. Fishing is ingrained in the fabric of the lives of those who fish. It is their special place, a place of camaraderie and release of the everyday tensions in a normal time, but especially in these times. As our elected leaders, I ask you to please set your sights on reopening the East Mosquito Bridge on the Jensen Causeway for the people of Martin County. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Mike Holliday, and Mike will be followed by Mark Nichols.
I'm going to keep it low. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for your time and for allowing me to address you. My name is Mike Holliday. I'm a resident of Stewart. I've been here since 1978, and I'm a fisherman. And I'm here to talk to you about that issue on the Jensen Causeway and the closure of the bridges. First, I'd like to say that it's kind of, to me, laughable that the FDOT received a bunch of complaints about trash and people blocking the access. I spent over an hour yesterday on their website trying to figure out how to file a complaint, and I couldn't figure it out. So to me, you know, it isn't easy to navigate your way to complain about trash on a bridge. So somebody had to make a concerted effort to do that. Even more concerning to me is the actual closing of the bridge because of these issues. Instead of addressing the problem with a simple law enforcement or signage, the FDOT opted to close the structure to fishing access. These bridges have always been open to land-based anglers, and they're popular, and not only popular, but safe locations for people to relax and enjoy Martin County's good nature. And I think when we allow small infractions to close our public access, we open the door to a lot of special interests and eliminate a lot of our valuable recreational activities. Then also, there's been a precedent to this. About 20 years ago, the same issue was taking place on the Roosevelt Bridge in Stewart. We had a big baitfish hatch. People were cast netting the bait. They were picking the ones they wanted and leaving their excess bait on the bridge. And did the FDOT close the bridge after all those complaints? It was a big issue. Did the FDOT close the bridge? Did the city of Stewart limit fishing? No, they just simply asked the Stewart police officers to stop and talk to the anglers, and the anglers, and explain the repercussions, and the anglers addressed the problem and policed themselves, and the problem was solved. So, you know, it seems very drastic to me to close the bridge. And I want all of you to understand that, really, it's not just about closing the bridge to fishing, but about, it's about public access. When we close or limit access to the public, we rarely get it back. And this county's growing faster and faster. We can all barely keep up with it. And as it grows, access to parks, bridges, shorelines, beaches, and open areas are going to be what determines the character of our county. Space to recreate, relax, celebrate, and spend time with our families is going to be at a premium. And if we start down this road of closing access to specific user groups instead of addressing any problems as they arise, then we set kind of a bad precedent for public access. And as I said before, once I...
[laughing]
You got it. Once I close a location, we rarely get it back. And when we close these important spaces, how are we going to enjoy our county's good nature? Thank you for your time. Hope you have an amazing day.
Thank you, Mike. Our next speaker is Mark Nichols, and Mark will be followed by Karen Hall-Yost Rudge.
My name is Mark. I own DOA Fishing Lures. I started 35 years ago. I've lived here for 40 years. The issue I'm here on is obviously Jensen Beach as well. Bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, since I've owned a business for 35 years, and I have to deal with a lot of people, just as you do, my best way to do it is go directly to the people that can help fix the problem. The person I'm assuming complained was on one corner of the bridge, and there's the snooknook, which has been here for how long now? 70 years or something like that? Has been there that they could have walked to very easily and said, is there something we could do to fix this problem and keep that bridge clean? It could have been handled very easily. They could have called me, and by the way, I'm proactive. I, being DOA Lures, will represent taking care of that bridge one week a month from now on. We will get volunteers, and we will make sure that bridge stays clean, because ultimately, it seems like that's the biggest issue. And rather than go blah, 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 I do believe that there's a lot of poor folks that do enjoy fishing, and I know that there's been a lot of very large fish caught off of that specific bridge. And for young people not to be able to enjoy themselves, as well as Rufus says, as people originally, why they made the law that if you're fishing off of the bank, you do not need a license. It was designed for people who could not afford to get a boat, and therefore, they could fish off the Roosevelt and fish off the bank. And that's why that was designed that way. So it would be nice if we would follow through. I will help keep that bridge clean and spotless, and we will police ourselves, because some fishermen are slobs. Some rich people are slobs. There's a lot of people that are slobs. I'm just saying, we will make sure it stays clean. That's all. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you.
You got to bear it every time you, it goes lower and lower every time you open your mouth.
Okay. Our next speaker is Karen Hall-Yost Rudge. And that's the final speaker form I have.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you all for your service. I'm thankful that we live in this country where we can redress our grievances. It's really marvelous. Karen Hall-Yost Rudge, 1701 Southwest Palm City Road. Been here 30 years. Came as a 21-year-old on a sport fishing boat. So I'm in my element here with all my fishing people. I came today, right here is a filing that went in from the Rudges, were defendants for 10 years. We are, we have defended the Fifth and the Fourteenth Amendments, which are no, you know, due process, life, liberty, property. But I don't want to talk about that. I want to talk about how in here for 10 years, I got emails going to the city commission and the county commission, and you've ignored me, and Maggie Hertelle is on the hook for $4.6 million? She did the same thing I did, same place I came from. I was a resident redressing my grievances. You chose to engage with her. She was a resident. You chose to engage with her. You chose to ignore me. And now the First Amendment is what I want to talk about. See how it goes in order? Life, liberty, property, number one. Okay? So now, we should be real proud of Martin County. We have set a precedent for the whole United States, because they went to the Supreme Court to try to get something, some relief. And now, now, because of us, the whole country, you are now going to be afraid if you come and tell your commissioner something? I have to go because I'm getting too mad. Thank you for your service. But what you've done to Maggie Hertelle and the First Amendment right, somehow, we have to fix it.
Okay, thank you. That's the last public, do we have comments on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. My name is Frank Mitch. I live in Palm City Farms, just off Citrus. And today, I would like to bring up the issue with flooding in Martin County. Back in November, we had our first meeting. Mr. Campy attended that meeting, along with representatives from Mr. Schneider and Mr. Masch. And we're now planning to have our second meeting on the 25th of February. So I would like to invite Mr. Campy and any other commissioners to attend that meeting on the 25th. Over the course of the last 60 days, almost 90 days, actually, as a community, we have not seen any action taken to clear the canals, creeks, ditches of our areas and our neighborhood. I'm very concerned with now rain season less than six months away again. You know, are we going to have a flooding issue along 714, along Citrus, in Out Ram, in Savage, in Woodham? And obviously, as the neighbors, we're all getting very concerned. We've been having meetings now for the last five weeks. You know, we have a committee of eight people that have, are volunteered to be on that committee. And our agenda today, really, is just to let you know that we're pushing forward. We've got an action plan, and we would obviously look the county to be involved with us to try and find a resolution. And that's it at this moment in time. Like I say, the invitations are open, not only to district five residents, but if people have sound or any other area within the county feel they have flooding issues, you're more than welcome to come and join us in our pursuit for some action through the county. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers on Zoom? That's the last speaker? Okay. All right. With that, looks like public comment is complete, and I'm going to move on to Commissioner comment, and we'll start over with Commissioner Hurd today.
Thank you. Last week, we attended a ribbon cutting at the Alapata Flats property, which is jointly owned by the South Florida Water Management District in Martin County. It's part of Indian River Lagoon South, and this plan is unique in that it has a natural lands component. So the Alapata restoration included plugging, ditches, building a perimeter levee. Swales and ditches were backfilled in order to create, to restore wetlands, to reestablish historic hydro periods in this incredibly valuable property. Yesterday, I was able to take a tour of the property with Jackie Thurlow Lipish from the South Florida Water Management District Governing Board, and the restoration work is breathtaking. The wetlands are functioning. Wildlife is returning. It just, it looks spectacular. It reminds me of the Kissimmee River Restoration Project. It's just, it's gorgeous, and it's, we own 12,000 acres. So far, the South Florida Water Management District, together with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, have restored 6,700 acres of the property, and it's just an absolute asset to Martin County. And it's open to the public, and there's camping there, and it's just, it's a terrific asset that we need to avail ourselves of. So this is part of the wetlands, natural lands component, and for some reason that I can't explain, when WARDER was, when the Water Resource Development Act authorized Indian River Lagoons... Act authorized Indian River Lagoons South back in 2006, the natural lands component was not part of it. So there's an additional 30,000 acres that, that need to, need to be acquired in order to protect the Indian River Lagoon and St. Lucie Estuary. And on the 27th of January, Drew Bartlett, who is the Executive Director of South Florida Water Management District, wrote a letter to Colonel Kelly from the Army Corps of Engineers asking that we work on, on solving this, adding this. And it's going to have to go through, it's going to have to get a project implementation report. It's going to have to get a federal authorization through a WORDA bill again. But this is a wonderful, wonderful step forward. And Commissioners, we have our work cut out for us in order to get this, this, this project participation agreement signed and the project implementation report signed and then sent to Congress for appropriation in the next WORDA bill. So I'm really, really pleased with the Water Management District and the Army Corps of Engineers to be moving this along in such, in such a terrific fashion. And also, without the natural area components, we would have to acquire land and build another 30,000 acre feet reservoir and 3,000 acres of stormwater treatment areas. With it, however, we recreate 30,000 acres of shallow wetlands, which perform a much greater benefit to the water quality and habitat in the flora and fauna in Martin County. And also, I wanted to just bring up a promotion that Shannon Este knows just received. She has been a, she spent her entire adult life advocating for Everglades Restoration, and she's been an unbelievably effective and articulate advocate. And she was just appointed to be the Principal Deputy Assistant Secretary overseeing the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and the National Park Service for the Department of the Interior. It's a phenomenally powerful position, and she's such, she's, she's the perfect person for the, the job. And I know that she will make us all very proud. So congratulations to Shannon. And that's what I have this morning.
Thank you.
Also, also, one more thing. In response to the anglers who joined us this morning, I think it would be extremely valuable to have an agenda item so that we can further discuss what can be done in order to reopen the bridge for fishing.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Commissioner Campy?
Thank you very much. A couple of things. I'd like to start off this morning that with the recognition of some of our employees, just about two weeks ago, we had a situation here in the building where one of our longtime employees suffered a catastrophic medical issue. That had it not been for the quick and solid thinking of some of, excuse me, some of her coworkers, we might have ended with a tragic outcome. We had someone that who had a major cardiac issue here in the building. And if it was not for the quick thinking of a group that is before you right now, let me introduce them. Jessica Garland, who was the team captain. Tony Wojner, Wojner, I apologize. Lissandra Benet, Patty Higginbotham, and John Mail. And their leader with them is Jim Gordon. Ms. Garland, not only was aware from her office space that something sounded out of the ordinary, she didn't just rest on that information. She went to investigate what could potentially have happened, found a, not only a coworker, but a friend in a very grave life and death situation, and she took action. Now, we all hoped that we would be able to take action. We all think that we would be able to take action. But Jessica did, and she rallied her coworkers, who also came immediately to their colleagues' aid. Not only did they immediately start CPR and lifesaving techniques, they were smart enough and, and had the mental wherewithal to remember that in the lobby of this building is a defibrillator that they quickly rushed down to get. And I personally believe, and I'm assuming my colleagues and everyone that knows the story would agree, that if it was not for their heroic efforts to stay calm under such a dire situation, our colleague and friend might not still be here. The good news is, is that she was rushed to the hospital and received very intensive medical care and was able to go home and is now resting and recuperating at home. And from the moment I heard the story, my heart sank for the situation, but it, it soared when I heard what you all did. And so I said to Ms. Krista and to our chair that I thought, and I know you don't do it for the recognition, and I know you're not here to be recognized, and I'm sure you feel uncomfortable, but it's, it's both for us, an acknowledgement of what you did, but also an education moment for the rest of us. Because a lot of us have taken CPR classes at some point in our lives, but I'll give you my own example. It was probably 30 years ago. And I don't know that if I was in your same situation, I like to believe that I would have the wherewithal to act, but I'd have to have the knowledge and the training to act as well. So I know that as an organization here, we are reconsidering where we have our defibrillators so that every facility would have one, but also have initiated a retraining for people that are interested. And I spoke to Mr. Gordon yesterday, and he said they have already gotten, you know, dozens, if not hundreds, of people. And so, not just in the county organization, but I would use this time to remind everyone to go out and get retrained. Because if you are called upon, like these heroes were, that we would be able to save a friend's life, save a coworker's life, save a stranger's life. So I just wanted to acknowledge you all, and I'm sure there was other people involved. But what you did saved the life, and so that makes you heroes, so. As well as the fact that we wish our colleague and dear friend a quick recovery. She is an integral member of our team, and the county runs as well as it does, and we accomplish as much as we do because of her. So we wish her Godspeed in her recovery, and we, we want her and expect her to come back to work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before you, before you go, Commissioner Smith has a comment.
Yeah, just to tag on to that, Ed did a phenomenal job outlining it all. I happened to walk into the building at the very time this was all going on to, I, I don't know that you could put it in any more light than, than Ed did, but to say that you all didn't absolutely save her life, yeah, you did. Because when she was leaving, she was not good at all, but she was alive. And that sort of momentary time between what you all did and when Stuart Fire Rescue got there was the difference. And so, you know, a very special part of our, our team here is here because of you all. Absolutely amazing. Great stuff. Fantastic.
Thank you. I would echo those same comments as well. So, thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Okay, just two other quick things. One, we'll wait for them just to depart. The Zoom caller this morning, Mr. McGee, he is correct in his recap of the situation in Palm City Farms. We've mentioned it. I know that in other areas of the county, we also have these issues. A couple of months ago, Mr. Gordon and Mr. Donaldson and I went at their invitation to a meeting that they had out in the Palm City Farms area. It was very well attended. We started to talk about strategies. It's a complicated, it's, it's a complicated strategy and situation. It's all interconnected from way out in western Martin County all the way through Palm City Farms. North of 714 comes under the turnpike into Martin Downs, comes through Martin Downs all the way to Lighthouse Point till it reaches, till it reaches the river. So we have been working. Public Works has invested, and the majority of the board, I think all of us actually voted about a year ago to initiate a study that is very comprehensive, which means it's going to take a while, and they're well through the first phases of it, so that we can address, it's all interrelated. So if, if the county staff were to address an issue where water is being held or not being held, we don't know what impact negatively it would have upstream or downstream. So we can't just individually address residents' specific issues. We have to look at it much more comprehensively, and our staff is doing that. And we're very close to having the information that is necessary. It's a multimillion-dollar fix that those residents deserve, and they will be getting. I know that last year's historic rains had really sort of shined a very bright spotlight on, on a difficult situation. People that had never seen flooding before had seen flooding. Now thankfully, in most of Palm City Farms, it wasn't as catastrophic as it was down in Hobe Hills and Hobe Heights and other areas of the county. But our staff is completely focused on, on addressing these issues. I and our staff will be there on February 25th. I know that they have an eight-person committee that they put together. Mr. Gordon gave me an excellent suggestion that if that is going to be the representative body of that group, which represents everyone in the area, we can give them bi-monthly or bi-weekly updates on, on what the county is doing. He might not have seen, the speaker this morning said he didn't really see any activity. I can assure him that there's been tremendous activity in the last couple of months. It's such a vast area with so many smaller side streets and, and areas of concern that might be on someone's private property. They might not have seen what we've been doing, but I can assure you, we've been out there working. I've been, I don't have to put a lot of pressure on the staff. They understand the mission at hand, but I have been staying on top of it. So we will hopefully see a, a, some resolution in the coming months and years, because that's what it's going to take. The other issue that I have, Madam Chair, briefly, is I'd like to ask for an agenda item. About nine months ago, we had a conversation when we were doing grants and aids, and the different organizations of the state, of the county come forward and, and present their situation on why or why not they should be given some of our grants and aids allotment of funds. And at the time, EREF, which is the equine rescue, horse rescue organization, had come forward and made a request. And at that point, some of my colleagues had said they were uncomfortable with the scope and the request, and that they wanted to see it handled more as a request for proposal process, as though it was a contracted service. And we've been through that. And I'd like to compliment our staff, led by Mr. Stokis and, and others in legal, that have worked to craft a, a unique request for proposal, which they did. And it was put out there, and now it has come back. And we've seemed to sort of have stalled, if you will, and that's my word. And what I'd like to do is, we're not allowed to speak to each other as commissioners. I don't know my commission colleagues' opinions. This organization, like many other organizations, has been outdoing the work while they've been waiting to see if the funding would come their way. You can imagine during the pandemic and the financial distress that has come with it, it's different to try to, with all due respect to my friends at the Humane Society, it's much harder to have someone adopt a horse than it is a puppy or a kitten. And the care and the finances that are necessary for taking care of these horses, some have been seized by the sheriff's office, but not most. A lot of people prior, you know, this organization reaches out to people that live in Palm City Farms and elsewhere in the county to try to first assist, and then if not assist, voluntarily ask these people that have horses that are not being properly taken care of to, to give them to the EREF, who will then give them the proper care. The organization was meant to handle about 14 or 16 horses. They have at times had 60 horses there. This is a privately funded organization. I have used district funds to assist, because that's sort of the District Five is an equestrian vibe. But they can't do it alone, and I'm fearful that if we don't help, the organization will go bankrupt, and then there'll be nowhere for these horses to go, and then they'll be most likely put down. The concept of just, well, we'll send them to Palm Beach County is not a thing, because Palm Beach County is handling their own horses. We have this wonderful organization in our community. I think it's important. So, Madam Chair, I would like to ask that that be put on as an agenda item so I could hear from my colleagues. I didn't mean to put them on the spot today, but this way, we can hear from each of us. They can come and present what they've been doing. I know there was a strategy to have it be handled through the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office did reach out to EREF, and, and EREF feels that they take in way more horses that are voluntarily forfeited from citizens than come through the sheriff's office. So I'd like to have that be an agenda item at our next meeting, and I know that staff is ready to discuss it. So if that's okay. If that has to be a motion, I'd make it a motion. If it needs to just be a recommendation, I'd make it a recommendation.
Ms. Krista, or Ms. Woods, do we need a motion?
Yes. And I know Commissioner Hurd asked for an item choose, so we're waiting.
Okay, well, I'll start with mine. I'll make a motion to bring the EREF discussion of, for the results of the request for proposal at our next meeting, which is February 16th.
Okay.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Hurd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And did you have another?
I was thinking if we could wait to hear from Commissioner Smith before we address the other issue that came up. Thank you. I'm done.
Send over your comments. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning.
Good morning.
I think Rufus put it probably the best of, not that all the speakers didn't do a good job this morning. I think the key word that Rufus put out there was that the causeway is a special place. And that's the challenge with this whole conversation, because apparently the people that use it don't think that. They think of it as their trash heap, junkyard disposal area, leave their dead fish out there, whatever. But, you know, I walk that thing a lot. And I will tell you, it is a disgusting mess, and it's a shame for the fishermen, actually, that are in the room that care about the fishing side of all this, of what people do to fish. I can't tell you how many dead fish they've left out on the sidewalk to die, which is unfortunate, because you can see them flopping around and, and sucking for trying to get air, and they don't care. Apparently, it wasn't the fish that they wanted, but they weren't kind enough to throw it back in the water and let it be. But, all that being said, the people in the room today that spoke, I think, are those that certainly have enough influence in the fishing world and the fishing community to do something about this. Because it's going to take you, and, and it's going to take your efforts to change the habits of those that don't think of it as a special place, which is a shame. Because if you were to go to any other park in our county and see what is left behind on that causeway, and if residents were to treat a park the way they treat that causeway, you would be really angry with us that we weren't doing something about it to clean that up. And you would never tolerate what exists out on that causeway. Never. And so, I'm thrilled that you're here. I'm thrilled that you have volunteered to take the lead on this and, and offered your time to adopt it for a month, whatever it is you all want to do. I think you're going to have to get together with the Sheriff's Department on the enforcement side. I mentioned that last, last time we talked about this, because that's really the only way it's going to stick. I'm sure FDOT is going to want some form of commitment from you all and from the Sheriff's Department to come up with a program to say, fine, this is how we're going to manage this and, and sort of, I don't know, so far as a, a contract, but an agreement with you all, that you are responsible for taking on the educational component of this and the responsibility of cleaning it if they leave it behind. Because there are others that are part of this discussion, too. Somebody mentioned special interest groups. I, I don't know if the public is a special interest, interest group that uses the bridge for other than fishing, but if they are, fair enough, because we represent them, too. There are plenty of people that would love to use the public space that is there, but don't and won't because of the conditions that are there on a regular basis. So Sarah has put a motion together. I don't know that it needs an agenda item, you know. Hang on.
I'm with you. I'm with you.
I don't know that it needs an agenda item. I think what it needs is the coordination of, of you all getting together, perhaps with a staff person here, I don't know who the right person is, the Sheriff's Department getting someone assigned, because that will be the biggest challenge, getting somebody funded to be out there on a regular basis and policing it and maintaining the discussion. The city of Stewart, as I said last time we talked about this, entirely different animal with their police department in terms of how they can shift their folks around and use them in such a way that it's effective. We don't have say over the Sheriff's Department here. The city does over their police department. The city does over their police department, and so what the city manager tells them to do, they will do. We need to talk to the sheriff and find out exactly how he sees this happening. I don't see Fish and Wildlife being out there on a full-time basis. I don't see them allocating the manpower to manage a mile-long bridge or a half-a-mile section. But I think this is a conversation that needs to happen with the sheriff's department. And Taryn, if there's someone here from staff you want to assign to that conversation, I'd be more than happy to participate in the conversation. But I think to all the speakers who spoke this morning, we all know who you are. You're very recognizable faces in our community. I really appreciate you coming forward and volunteering, because that's what it's going to take. It's going to take you guys, the leaders of this community, to set the tone. And if you're not out there, and we're just talking about it, that's not going to make the difference. You all, you know, Florida fishing sportsmen, you know, you all have the power to make this a very conscious discussion. You all deal with folks on a regular basis, and you need to be the arms and the ears and the eyes to help us manage this thing, because otherwise it won't happen. It'll just go back to what it's been for all these years that we've had to deal with it. So I'm encouraged that you're here. I appreciate it. Thank you. And hopefully, Rufus, we can turn it back to the special place that it used to be when you were a kid and others had those fond memories, because it's not now. If I had a child old enough to take out there to go fishing, I would never take them there. That's how bad it is. So we don't need a motion. I think we're just—well, do you need direction for that? Okay, so Sarah, do you want—
You're giving more direction, I think.
I just think that we need to be the lead on this, so that we can organize a recovery. I agree that it's going to take volunteers, it's going to take county, it's going to take the sheriff, it's going to take a group effort. But I think that we need to be the leaders to organize that effort. So I think we need to have an agenda item.
I agree with the concept. I don't think you need an agenda item. I think we just need to direct staff to assign a staff person and organize a meeting, to put all those players together, and come up with a plan.
That sounds like a motion.
Well, Sarah had a motion. I don't want to like, you know—
No, she had a—
Huh?
No.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a substitute motion that we ask staff to assign a staff person—
We don't have a motion on the floor, so it wouldn't be a substitute.
She did earlier.
No, she didn't. It was just a conversation.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion that we ask staff to assign a staff person to the project of organizing the group, or we all want to be called, along with Fish and Wildlife, Sheriff's Department, FDOT, and see if we can't come up with a plan of action as to how to both educate and clean and maintain the Jensen Causeway.
Second. My comment was just that I think that we can handle it. We've already heard from the Riverkeeper, as he said, this was his third time. We're all very aware of the situation. We were not aware of it when it happened, because it's an FDOT bridge, not a county bridge, but we've all become aware of it. And so I like what Commissioner Hurd was originally thinking, that it should be an agenda item, but I think we've heard enough. We just had the agenda item, and then this way, we can have two weeks of getting started, because until, like Commissioner Smith said, until you get it figured out with the sheriff and everybody else, it's still closed. So this gives you a two-week head start. So that's why I'm seconding the motion that you get started right away.
And I think in my mind, if we assign a staff person, then we would be taking the lead to facilitate. So, okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you. Now, did you have additional comments? Commissioner Jenkins.
I didn't mean to push my button. I just want to remind everybody that this weekend is—Saturday and Sunday is the Hope Sound Festival of Arts. So please come down.
Great. And that is on Saturday?
Saturday and Sunday, yeah. I'll be in the beer tent.
From like, 10 o'clock or so?
Pouring beer. No, I'm pouring beers. You know, I got on the website to find the— I can't—I think it's 10 o'clock, yeah.
I think it starts at 10 o'clock.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's parking offsite at the—
Winn-Dixie Shopping Center.
Winn-Dixie and also Pine School.
Pine School Parking Lot, yeah, absolutely. And we got a shuttle bus that brings you there.
And you're outside, and you're socially distanced.
And you're outside, and please socially distance and be safe. Yeah, absolutely.
Great. Hopefully, with nice weather, too. Okay. And I wanted to just recognize, in this era, normally we would have a large banquet by the Boys and Girls Club to honor their Youth of the Year. They did do a virtual presentation last Friday, and these youth are three of—there are many, many youths that they picked that—with their mission to lead, succeed, and inspire. And I think they're worth acknowledging. Of course, they're in school today. And we have Mariah from Cole Clark Club in Hope Sound, Narita from the Bill and Barbara Whitman Club in Indian Town, and Yasmin from the John and Marge Bolton Club in Port Salerno. So I just wanted to recognize these three outstanding individuals that the Boys and Girls Club of Martin County chose as the Youth of the Year.
The nominees, Mariah is the Youth of the Year.
Mariah is the official Youth of the Year.
Those were the nominees. She won the whole thing.
And Mariah is from the Cole Clark Club in Hope Sound. So congratulations, always having wonderful—recognizing these wonderful youth. And then I just wanted to ask, Ms. Christa, could we have the Department of Health at a future meeting? Just give an update on vaccinations and where we are, and, you know, where residents can contact, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am. I will reach out to Carol Anne and ask her to be here at your next meeting to do that? Yes, absolutely.
Great. I think that would be great for our residents, you know. Information is changing quickly, and so the more up-to-date we can keep them, the better. And that's all I have. Ms. Christa?
No, I'm good, Mr. Wood.
Ms. Woods? Okay, great. With that, we have ended comment, and we're going to move on to our first agenda item, which is a preset. And I would like to welcome here today Dwayne DeFreeze from the Indian River Lagoon Council. And I have the pleasure of working, you know, every day with Dwayne as the vice chair of the Indian River Lagoon Council. And there's some wonderful things, and we just had NEP reauthorized, and I thought it would be certainly valuable that my colleagues know all the wonderful things we're doing at the Indian River Lagoon Council as well. So welcome, Dwayne.
Well, good morning, everybody. And first, I want to start by thanking you, thanking you for your clean water vision, your proactive county, and we couldn't survive or thrive in the IRL Council without your continuing support. And as it relates to that last item you were talking about, I just talked to Mike Connor and suggested that he call us. We've got a small grants program coming up. Even though it's competitive, I could see this being a really competitive project. You know, we have this littering issue on causeways throughout the lagoon. And so as we can help you with this, we'd love to do so. Then one last thing. We also can't do this without support of your staff. So I really want to call out, you know, Diane Hughes and also John Mail. When I call and I need something, they're always there, always responsive, always proactive and supportive. And so thanks for, you know, giving us the ability to partner at a level that five years ago, we actually all hoped and anticipated we'd be in a partnership this close. I can say now that we are there. So what I'd like to do is quickly roll through some slides, give you an idea of where we are today. We have completed our fifth year. It's kind of hard to believe, but we reorganized five years ago. And the first few slides I'll run through quickly, but I think at five years, it's always good to relook at why we're here, you know, what our charges and what our authorities are. And so as you all know, we are one of 28 estuaries of national significance. So we get reauthorized under Section 320 of the Clean Water Act every five years. Went through that process just this past year, and I'll bring you up to speed on the details of that. But there's also interest in expanding this program, and wanted to let you know that state of Florida would very much like to see a fifth national estuary program, Perdido-Pensacola. They didn't get through Congress this year, but I want to say a special thank you to Senator Marco Rubio's office, who has been the champion of that, and also hugely supportive, along with Congressman Brian Mast down here, in both our appropriations and reauthorizations. And I'm very pleased to say that has always been a— Five years ago, we changed our vision, mission, you know, kept the same goals, but the driver for us and the foundation of what we do is really this mission of one lagoon, one community, one voice. You know, working as independent 38 cities or seven counties simply doesn't get us the bandwidth we need in Tallahassee, and doesn't get us any bandwidth as we move into Congress. And we are finally now, I think, being viewed as a super region, where we are working very closely together on a whole suite of issues, including Everglades restoration, something we added within our CCMP just recently. And so I'm really not just happy where we are, but we've got a lot of work to do in that one voice component. You know, we still have a lot of fractions, you know, a lot of just, you know, local issues that are local problems. But I can tell you that the Indian River Lagoon program is here to help you as a county and the cities within this county as they address local programs that relate to the lagoon. This is seven really lengthy bullets on what we are authorized to do in Section 320. There's really only three major components of this that matter. Convene the management conference to make sure our stakeholders and our citizens are fully engaged. Complete a comprehensive conservation management plan, you know, so it's an overarching document to make sure we're all pointed in the same direction. And then lastly, track that plan through monitoring, through trend analysis, through water quality work. And we have taken really significant strides to get those three done over the last couple of years. And I want to showcase some of those, because some of them are transformational changes on how this program works, very, very different than what we looked like 10 years ago, even five years ago. We still operate with a management conference of over 100 volunteers. Next week, we'll be talking to the IRL Council Board of Directors. We have a number of vacancies for Martin County, you know, folks that have, you know, left town or have resigned. And so we'll be working with Chair Heatherington to try to fill those. But for citizens who are interested in serving, we've got a number of open vacancies, and we're going to try to fill those between now and our May meeting. And we still operate lean and mean. So we currently are a staff of four for the whole East Coast of Florida, just about. And we will continue to try to keep administrative costs as low as we can and still get the job done. And we are one of the smallest NEPs in the nation as it relates to staffing. Back in August 2019, we completed the Comprehensive Conservation Management Plan. We have not put that out to print, mainly because there were some moving pieces, and we thought we wouldn't incur printing costs until we had some of those clarified. We will be moving to put that into print. It is on the website, still in a draft forum, but we have been operating really for three years based on that plan. And all of that couldn't happen without your investment. And I'm really pleased to say that we have held the IRL Council coalition together, and we've been able to receive incremental improvement in funding from EPA, which was not something we anticipated five years ago. So our reauthorization back in 2016 was at $26.5 million for the entire nation, a very modest amount when you think about these estuaries. We were receiving $600,000 per NEP. Last year, you know, we had a bump. Right now, we're working at $660,000. The budget that former President Trump passed and Congress supported with bipartisan back in December, that omnibus bill brings us up to $700,000 for 2022. But I am going to be honest, as your executive director for this program, I'm unhappy, because we have never been appropriated at the full amount authorized by Congress, which would have been $750,000. And so I'm going to bring some good news to you here in a minute, but we need to be working together to get that appropriation amount to the full authorized amount that Congress calls for. And we have an opportunity to move that forward. So our priorities that we're in right now—and we're in the second quarter, our fiscal year begins October 1—is to implement projects, continue to focus your local dollars and our support from the state on projects that make a difference, expand and diversify revenue. This was not a major focus until last year, and we are really driving that issue today. Expanding our communication division, supporting existing partnerships like ours, but also expanding our partnerships more on a national level, and then promoting technology, science, and innovation. So really quickly, I'm going to just run through some of these. So the heart of the CCMP is this vital signs wheel. Thirty-two high-priority issues that actually come together to define the health of a system. And we had our management conference rank each one of these based on their health concerns. And this was scientists, resource management, and citizens. And six are at that critical level of concern. So you see three, you know, in the water quality components, stormwater, wastewater, impaired waters. It's all about nutrients and pollutants. We have a critical concern about seagrasses, which even after the last few years of sections of the lagoon improving in water quality, we're still down in the 43% of the high coverage. And so recovery has been really slow, even during times where we had good water clarity. Harmful algal blooms continue to plague the central part of the lagoon. And in fact, this last year, from July to just around Thanksgiving and Christmas, all of the southern mosquito, all of the Banana River and the Indian River Lagoon, almost all the way down to Sebastian River, was in full harmful algal bloom conditions for almost six months. And they're species we had not seen before, really tiny nanoplancton, which is concerning to us. Water quality has improved, but we don't think it's going to be permanent, because as soon as it starts raining, we see stormwater, groundwater contributions. We expect to see those blooms continue. And then the last one, of course, is funding. We can't do this without more funding. And so one of the things we did—so we've kind of looked back to see how funding has moved previously, and also done something that no NEP has done that I'm aware of before, and assembled projects from all of our partners, including the county here, and said, how many projects are on five- and 10-year CIPs, you know, the capital improvement plans? Who's got ideas for projects that are, you know, critical, especially infrastructure like septic to sewer? And by the way, congratulations on your progress on septic to sewer. You are a model for the Indian River Lagoon in your efforts there. And I want to show you what that need is, but if you look over the last five years, this is the distribution of funds by county and the number of projects. And so while the money may be modest in its total amount, what I'm very excited about, and congratulations to you as a county, the first year I came on board, our relationship was about one-to-one. Local, you know, governments were bringing about $1 for every other dollar we had in the NEP. This last year, it was about six-to-one. And what that shows is that local communities, the cities, the counties, are all coming to the table in very different ways, but with real investment in lagoon restoration. And I think that's good news. And what we need to do is keep working on state and federal funding to up that total amount that's matchable. So priority number two is expanding resources. And I want to kind of just celebrate for the moment what happened between Thanksgiving and literally just a few— and literally just a few weeks ago. On January 13, our reauthorization was signed into law. And you can imagine lame duck period, lot going on up in Washington DC, had bipartisan support. It was a really rugged road to get there. But that reauthorization now authorizes up to 50 million in annual funding for the National Estuary Program, an increase from 26.5 million. So the challenge we have moving forward is getting Congress committed to funding the full amount. And if we were at the full amount with the formula that's used, that would take the current 700,000 planned for 2023, could take it up to 1.4 million in federal funding. Still a modest total amount, but it is a huge percentage increase and one of the first we've seen in decades for the National Estuary Program. State appropriations, as you all know, we've got a challenging year ahead up in Tallahassee. I'm sure you've all seen the governor's budget this week, very strong on water, you know, quality, very strong on Everglades. And I really support this transformational change because our governor sees this programmatically and not the way we did for decades, project by project. And so seeing annual appropriations coming out of a governor's budget is really big news. See how it all sorts out during the legislative session, but I'm encouraged that we're putting money where we need it. We just need more of that money. Competitive grants are always available. You know, we provide an RFP every year. Very often, you are competing for those projects. We will bring 18 new projects to ranking and funding next week for the 2022 fiscal year that starts in October. And then we're looking at private sector funding. We are working with St. John's River Water Management District, this legislative session, to move administrative oversight on the Florida Indian River Lagoon license plate to the NEP so we can not just administer it, but then we can begin to market it lagoon-wide. The relationship will stay the same between the counties. You know, for Martin County, Palm Beach County, St. Lucie County dollars will flow through South Florida Water Management District. But that is the legislation that we're planning to move forward here shortly. And for the first time ever, we're selling T-shirts and hats just as a test to see if there is a way to increase some of our small grants funding. So if you go online, we actually have an online store. Told you about the federal funding update. We have made really big strides there. One of the things that changed in the CCMP is that we look at connected waters as one of those vital signs. And so I am actively engaged, along with our state and federal partners, when water, you know, WERDA gets reauthorized, you know, when we're chasing appropriations for Everglades. And so that's something that's new. Prior to that, we did it quietly, without full authority. We have full authority to engage in those larger issues, including the nearshore ocean issues that are close to our lagoon inlets. And so we'll be working over the next year to try to get that full $50 million appropriation. And then again, at the state level, you know, I'm expecting to see more bills drop. There's a number that are relevant to the Indian River Lagoon. We'll work with your staff, but one thing I do ask, if you're putting legislative budget requests through for special projects, make sure that your staff let me know those projects so when I'm talking to legislators that, you know, I can support you and your efforts for local projects, should you be looking at LBRs. And this is what the big need looks like. So we're one of the few, if any, NEPs in the nation that said, let's see what this might cost in its entirety. So we have assembled over 1,000 projects from the counties, the 38 cities, our nonprofits, our research organizations. And you can see the spread of those projects, including IRL South. And so we're expecting, and we are in writing in the CCMP saying, we're expecting about a $5 billion 20 to 30-year effort to address those infrastructure and other issues that will restore the lagoon to a stable and then long-term stewardship position. And the question becomes, okay, how do you do that? And so in a couple of weeks, I will be submitting a draft report. It's part of what we call a concurrence report to the EPA, which you will all, Commissioner, you will get to get it first, but I want this report kind of shared widely with staff, but it's a strategy to finance the CCMP without being prescriptive, without telling our federal, state, local partners how much and what you should do, but where are the pools of money? Where are the opportunities? And how do we get to about 200 million a year, which is a heavy lift, but it is not impossible? And the federal government, I think, has a lot, there's a lot of opportunities, even with the COVID stimulus recovery that we expect somewhere later in the year, to look at water infrastructure support. So I'll leave you with this. I talked about the IRL license plate. We'll keep you posted as that moves forward. We want to secure grants and our first year out, and actually writing grants from the NEP proved to be quite a success. So on December 3, we were informed by Department of Environmental Protection that we will receive $963,000 to do an innovation technology project with our partners, looking at harmful algal blooms, using a very sophisticated software system that was developed for weather by a company called Storm Center Communications out of Maryland. So we're just writing the contracts for that now. That money will flow through the NEP, we'll administer that contract, and you will be, your staff will be engaged in this. We're going to be reaching out to partners for data sets. The goal of this is to possibly bring this in as a communication, it's not a website, it's more like a dashboard for the state of Florida for water quality. And so we'll see how that all works, but it's an exciting and will be a very, very busy year coming up, adding this to our staff responsibility. We've increased our social media presence. We'll continue to do that, both from an investment standpoint and from the way we communicate through video, Facebook, and all the social media platforms. And this is one I want to basically not just challenge, but make a request. Every year, I budget $40,000 for our partners to take advantage of three firms that we've contracted with to provide professional grant writing services. This is available to nonprofits, the counties, the cities, almost anybody who's doing a project or seeking money for a project for the Indian River Lagoon. Basically, we will review that one-page request if it meets the Comprehensive Conservation Management Plan. We enter it, we already have the contract in place. We will hand a professional grant writer to you. We will pay for that time spent to write the proposal. And all you do is, you know, put them to work on your proposal. In no year since we've been doing this, and I think it's now three or four years, have I ever completely spun out that budget line item. And so this is like a free pass to grant writing support. My goal this year is, please, if you're writing a grant, tell staff, you know, we can assist you. And you can see just a few examples of the return on investment. Brevard County, we laugh about because many of you know Brevard's got a half-cent sales tax, they're generating 30 million a year. Virginia Barker, you know, who's in charge of that program, called me, she said, I need some grant support. I said, gosh, Virginia, you have $30 million. She said, it's not the money, it's, I don't have the people to actually write the grant in the timeline. You can see, we spent 6,000, a little over 6,000. They received a grant award for 1.5 million from the Stan Mayfield. So please, take advantage of this opportunity and share it, you know, with those folks in Martin County who may be chasing grant dollars because it is a great service that's been excellent on return on investment. These are new partners for 2021, and you can see that we are increasing our federal leadership position, most importantly with SACURA, the Southeast Coastal Ocean Observing Systems, and also the Southeast and Caribbean Disaster Resilience Partnership. There is a new nonprofit just formed over the last 60 days called the Lagoon Waterman Alliance. We've been assisting them. These are captains along the lagoon. Many of you know Benny Blanko. And so they're putting together a stakeholder nonprofit, and we've been assisting behind the scenes on that. And then I'm going to finish up with kind of one of my pet projects, and this is really one that I'm driving individually. It's not a program focus, but when in my spare time, I believe the state of Florida could lead the nation and the world in water innovation and technology. We're going to need some information to move that, you know, to the higher levels of discussion in Tallahassee, in places like Enterprise Florida. And in order to do that, we started to put some data together. And this just shows you a preliminary list of companies that are in the water, wastewater, sensor, technology, innovation. You know, we're looking at, you know, over 244 companies. So our goal is start to build that into a regional perspective for technology and innovation, and then to use that to not just push the state of Florida, but also to push up to Washington DC to gain more funding for technology advancement, especially as it relates to wastewater treatment. Not advanced wastewater treatment, but what's that next level where we don't need to worry about microplastics or dissolved organics. We don't need to worry about biosolids because they're being recycled to energy. And so we will now start to ramp up that initiative. And this is the program at a glance right now. We have 44 projects under contract in management. I've talked about all of the others on the expansion. And we also have concurrence documents for financing, communication, monitoring plan, habitat restoration plan. You will see those emerging out of the program for review over the next year to three years. So with that, I'll conclude and just again, say thank you so much for your support. You know, we are being driven now, finally, by local leadership like yours. It's what we envisioned five years ago, but we couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Thank you, Dwayne. I appreciate that. And I had to chuckle somewhat when you said in your spare time what you're working on because we all know, you know, we're having worked with you. And I think that I share my sentiments, those sentiments with my fellow board members at the Indian River Lagoon Council. We're so fortunate to have your leadership. So thank you for being here today, and we have a couple Commissioner questions and comments. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dwayne, welcome. Good morning.
Good to see you.
I remember that meeting very clearly when things were dismantled and pulled back together. And I don't think any of us at the time really knew or thought or appreciated where things were going to go and had the confidence. But I remember your name being brought up and everybody was unanimously enthralled with the idea that that would be the person that would be leading us into the next 20 years or whatever period of time of IRL NEP. And I think your presentation absolutely supports the idea you were the right person at the right time to do what had to be done. So thank you for that and thank you for being here. Hey, a couple of thoughts. First of all, fantastic presentation, great stuff, and I think, I think you guys have really ramped up the efforts of what you're doing. One thing I'm curious about on the biosolids front, do you, in your list of the red dot hot buttons, if you can go back to your 20-some projects on the PowerPoint, does biosolids in your mind fall under one of the, under wastewater or is that a separate category? It just doesn't show up on, on the list?
It's within the wastewater and it's been a high priority. It's rare to see the Council Board of Directors kind of engage in what I would call regulatory issues. And in the five years, I think we've only had two resolutions that are pushing on large policy, and one of them is biosolids.
Okay, great. I just, I think Stacy presented a while back the general framework of your presentation, and I asked her the question at that time because I didn't see it specifically called out because I think of wastewater on our end being the provision of getting water and sewer to a resident's house or a business's address. The biosolids issue for me is a whole separate initiative that transforming how we've been dealing with wastewater all these years into innovative new technology that exists is another. And so just as long as it is there and it's, and it's in your program, fantastic. I, super.
Yes. And it's not just biosolids. We looked at wastewater as a, as a waste stream management issue.
Sure.
So the reclaim water issue is also problematic in sections of the lagoon where we're just, we have surplus water. You know, it's not at AWT standards and, and, you know, every nutrient pound we put into the system from humans is a problem. And so we've looked at some technology which, in fact, I'll make sure John has a copy of this, some, you know, what does the 21st century wastewater plant, treatment plant look like? And there was a company that's got some real innovative technologies that just, you know, it's such a big investment on infrastructure that have worked, been working with Debbie Mayfield. We'd love to see the state do a pilot project on, you know, what might that look like beyond AWT?
So to that point, we have been working with them since we had our biosolids conference. Were you there at the?
I was.
Yeah, okay. And, and the technology exists, and the guys that you're talking about are literally rocket scientists. They, they build most of the major components for SpaceX and whatnot. I think they did the F-35 frame or sheet panels, whatever. But at the same time, they're also amazing engineers. And when they approached the biosolid, you know, question from the Gates Foundation, could you build a scalable system that was transportable anywhere in the world that you could take relatively easily and set up? And they said, sure, we can. We built that and they created it. The technology exists. It's just literally, as you just said, it's getting a pilot program done. Debbie has been an enormous champion. Her committee the last two years had that as one of their priorities. We are actively trying to get that back into the mix this year to get a pilot funded. And I, and I think you've probably heard this in multiple conversations, but one is to both get an urban platform done, but also to go to the agricultural community because the process is perfectly transferable to both cattle industry, to chicken industry, to anything that produces waste. It's the same still way to separate the products out and take care of it. So we're going back to that full, full head of steam this year again to try to get that done. It is a huge investment, but I think once people see it and understand how it really works and what it produces at the end of the day, that's completely separate from being just one sort of mass of recycled material, is absolutely fantastic. Second piece, you know, you touched on a lot in the presentation on your funding and how that works and what that model looks like. Have you ever seen Frank Bernardino's presentation?
I believe I had, but I hadn't seen one in a while.
For your, for an upcoming meeting, I would invite Frank to come give you the presentation on water and funding for the state of Florida. One of the glaring things, and this is something that kind of came to my mind a couple of years ago in terms of how are we getting where we're getting? And I always love to point this out because it's fun because Ed, we love to give Ed credit for coming up with the extra $200 million last year in the president's budget because he was there. And it just seemed appropriate that had Ed not been there, that wouldn't have happened the day we were there. So Ed, again, thank you for the extra 200 million. But the reality to all of this and to your program, our water issues, and everything we've been trying to do for the last 20 years, we have not yet reached a level of funding that is continuous, that is, it's a roll, it's a rolling number. And what struck me a couple of years ago is the FDOT model. And, and the reason why FDOT has become, or I say become, is so successful at doing what they do, FDOT's budget right now is about a $10 million rolling budget, a billion, not million, $10 billion budget. I think all in on water in the state I think all in on water in the state of Florida on any given year, around a billion, a billion and a half dollars a year. We have, I think in Frank's presentation, over $100 billion worth of work to do. If you were to say, show me the list, fix everything on the list, and we would have perfect water in Florida, all in, it's well over $100 billion. And Frank has that very well articulated. The legislature assigned a task force, financial task force last year to verify and document all that. And so the question is, how, how do we get from where we are today with the funding strategies you have, whether it's EPA, federal, whatever, or state, our local match dollars, but really we get the commitment of the state dollars up to a level similar, maybe not exactly what FDOT is at, but to that kind of a level? I mean, if you had a reoccurring $5, $6 billion budget in Florida a year, it wouldn't take long on a 20-year planning horizon to say, I can, I can knock off 40 or 50 of those major projects out of 100, or whatever the number may be, to fix all of our water woes over a period of time. And so I think another thing I would love your counsel to talk about or think about, first have Frank come and at least see where he, you know, where the financial model has come from that shows that. But then how do we all start pulling together to create and mirror the system by which FDOT has been so successful in doing what they're doing? You can imagine if you were in the asphalt, concrete, engineering, whatever industry has anything to do with building roads, bridges, anything in the state of Florida, if you knew that there was a reoccurring $10 billion fund every year, there would be an incredibly aggressive lobby effort, and there would be an incredibly aggressive support level for the legislature and the governor to make sure that that funding kept on going. In the water world, we don't have that.
Correct.
We're not in that game, because the amount of money that we do put in, and this governor has done a great job bumping that number up significantly, it's still not enough yet to lure the industry in in such a way that FDOT is, is in. Two components that I think they're missing, and just for something for you all to talk about and think about, FDOT has a long-range transportation plan, and every five years they redo a 20-year plan so that there's a constant review of what that 20 years looks like every five years. We don't do that necessarily in the water world. There's also an advisory board of about 40 people that sit on that long-range transportation planning process, and every five years they go through everything that FDOT is doing. They recheck it, double-check it, make sure everything in there is supporting the effort at which Florida is trying to do to keep up with transportation. That then goes to the Transportation Commission, which is either a seven or nine member board that the governor appoints. We don't have that either in water. So we don't have that seven, eight-member, seven, nine-member appointed board by the governor on water. We also don't have that 40-member advisory panel that meets every five years and not every, they start actually two years before, but in a five-year cycle, they're constantly going through and doing that. I think if we could move in that direction and create that system, you'd have the longevity and you'd have the support in the background constantly pushing, whether you're here, we're here, anybody's here, that longevity of that system keeps in place and makes sure that the money keeps rolling, because that's, I think, the piece of this we're missing. Anyway, I'm sorry to take so much time.
We are in 100% agreement on that one, and you may see some legislation drop on the coastal and ocean side of this. You know, for space, we have Space Florida. For tourism, we have Visit Florida. Lucky enough and honored to serve the former governor and still on the Career Source Florida Board, we do not have an executive-level advisory group to our legislature and to the governor on coastal and ocean or water issues, and there's a tremendous opportunity this session to maybe move that through. And I, I think Florida Ocean Alliance is, is going to be dropping some proposed legislative language for that over the next couple of weeks, because we're getting to deadline. But I'll reach out to Frank, because Frank's on my list, to send him this financial option strategy, because often you start this with a small look, and so we have used the FDOT model in our thought process. So next week, council will make a decision on two RFQ contractors, and one of which would be supporting CCMP implementation. And we have a vision, what I will, of course, now you're going to get it in advance, but what I'm going to propose is that we bring two contractors under that RFQ, you know, one focused on the economic side of the equation, and the other focused on this thousand project list, and then have that contractor come back. So for Martin County, the NEP does not want to tell Martin County what your priorities are. Your priorities are your priorities at a local level, and, you know, sometimes it's water first, but sometimes it's safety first, then water. But we would prioritize that list within the municipalities, but then also assemble what I would call the shovel-ready turn dirt, highest priorities, so you're not having to look at $5 billion, and you're saying in the next five years, you know, here's 30 projects that need to move forward. And then maybe if we're the example of doing it, you know, in a 156-mile multi-county region, that we can start to move that agenda, the very agenda you're talking about is the missing link. You're 100% right, because we don't have a plan.
So there's an individual that sits on the St. John's Water Management Governing Board that is also one of the members of the Long Range Transportation Commission for the governor. I've had this conversation with him on multiple occasions, and if you want, I'll, I'll get you two together to talk about that. If you think about the structure that is in place, you have your water management districts, you have your FDOT districts, very similar makeup and governance system of how all that kind of happens. What is missing, I think, is that 40-member advisory board, and then the nine-member commission that answers the governor. So thank you very much for coming, and thanks for all the time, Madam Chair.
Appreciate the information.
Also, if you don't reach out to Chloe, please do. Chloe Seuperg, who is our Governor Affairs person, she is very much engaged with the biosolids folks and Senator Mayfield's office and all, in trying to coordinate all that. And then, of course, John Mail, whom I'm sure you are in constant contact with in terms of all that. Thanks.
Great. And Commissioner Hearn?
Yeah. Thanks for joining us, and congratulations on all the accomplishments that you've done in the last five years. Just an observation, I'm looking at the insufficient funding, it's $5, $6 billion worth of projects, and the most expensive by far is septic tank conversion, but the most benefit is from, in nutrient reduction, both in nitrogen and phosphorus. By far, it is muck removal and navigation at a much lower price. I just think it's interesting that we've, if we know that these are the projects that are going to do benefit us the most, why we have been reluctant to emphasize and prioritize those projects?
That's a great question, and you have to remember, this list is a wish list from our partners, and so we have to QA QC these thousand projects. But what's interesting about the lagoon, and something I didn't know my first 30 years as a scientist, is how different the, the impacts are from region to region. And so, you know, Volusia County is a really good example. So back in 2017, we worked with DEP and St. John's, and actually did a stormwater feasibility analysis for the whole lagoon. And you all know down here, you've got tremendous impacts from the west. I mean, just the normal impacts without the Lake Okeechobee discharges, which are those acute impacts. That watershed impact, so the stormwater value down in the southern lagoon to almost northern Brevard, in many places is going to have a higher value than maybe even septic to sewer and the big picture of pounds per year, but also the control of fresh water. You get up to Volusia County, and they don't have any of those, what we call, large regional stormwater. You know, they're largely limited to urban stormwater, and so I'm now convinced that, you know, you can't look at this lagoon-wide. We're going to need to separate this, not just county by county, but in segments that make ecological and hydrological sense. And, and so I kind of look at it as the southern lagoon is Martin-St. Lucie. You've got that central lagoon, you know, Brevard takes up two-thirds of the system, and a lot of the urbanization is driving problems there. There's no question Banana River, you know, it's not stormwater, it's septic, it's wastewater, it's those issues. So we're going to need to take this list, and it's one of the reasons we're coming back to council next week for consulting support, to begin to parse this list into what I would call a strategic targeted approach that is, you know, sub-lagoon oriented. So you're getting the best bang for the buck in the segment of the lagoon that's being impacted by those projects. Muck dredging is an interesting one, and the data, you know, it's about 50/50. You ask people, is it good, is it bad? Brevard County has some compelling data from the dredge projects that were funded a number of years ago by the legislature that shows that you can really advance water clarity with a dredge project if it's done correctly, and many of those projects run into difficulty in muck management, you know, especially small areas. And then also that effluent that pushes back, you know, even at 1 to 3 milligrams per liter for phosphorus and nitrogen, scientists like me keeps thinking, well, how come if we're going to grab it at that big cost, can't we get that down to negligible? That's a technology challenge, but there's no question on a cost-per-pound basis, at least in Brevard County, where they've analyzed it, muck dredging will get you there fast. And, and it is a internal nutrient flux that we're seeing, especially, you know, where we're seeing these harmful algal blooms, where if we don't address that, you know, we're just not going to move the bar. But at the same time, the argument is, you know, why remove muck if you're still putting all the, you know, all the grass and all the other things into the system to create more muck? And so the timing of prioritization of projects is also important. But we're going to try to do that over the next year, parse down to answer the very question that you're, you're asking. And Brevard County's got a very formidable analysis, and, and they look at just nitrogen removal. They don't, you know, they focused and commoditized nitrogen only, and I warn them and everybody that there are other values that you as elected officials have to take into consideration when you look at these projects. So it's sediment, it's freshwater loads, it's phosphorus, it's nitrogen in the detail of those, but it's also flood and human health and shoreline protection on resiliency. We're going to try to take this down, but we're going to do it with you, because we don't want to tell Martin County, you know, what's most important to you. You're going to tell us, and then we're going to shape this project list into exactly what Commissioner Smith's talking about, something that's more targeted, generally prioritized, and then we'll put a timeline on what's reasonable in our acquisition of dollars.
Thank you, Duane. We need to wrap up because we have our closed captioning, but one final thought, would it be helpful for this body to write a letter in support of full appropriation to our congressional delegation?
The answer is yes, but not right now. So we just got the omnibus bill passed in December. There's a lot of question as to how appropriation is going to be addressed. Last night I was talking to folks up in Washington. They don't expect to see a presidential budget till maybe as late as March. And so the big question is, does this new Congress, the 117th Congress, take up and try to amend the existing budget? You know, do they do this through, you know, other means? And I think the other means is going to be, you know, COVID stimulus response will be the first action. And then I think we may see somewhere down the line a COVID stimulus recovery package that's infrastructure. So I'll let you know when I think the timing is right for that, but right now, we're just a little unclear about, you know, when they're going to take up appropriations based on this new reauthorization, but it's probably premature to do it now.
Okay, great. You'll let us know. One final comment from Commissioner Smith before we take our break.
Yeah, Madam Chair, just so that we don't ever lose focus, and Duane, not that she would, but I would, I would move this as an interim sort of strategy, what the chair just asked for, that we do move to authorize staff for the chair's signature when the time is appropriate, so you don't have to come back. Such a letter that supports the funding strategy that, that is appropriate, whether it's full funding, saving, protecting what we have, but that, that, we already agreed today that when, if that's next month, that staff will put a letter together for the chair's signature when you deem it's the right time and appropriate.
Right.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Wonderful. All right. Well, thank you so much for being here today, and we will, yes, who has a question?
No motion.
Motion on the second.
Oh, okay, that wasn't direction. Who seconded that motion?
He did.
Commissioner Campi. Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Duane. We'll see you next week.
Thank you.
Okay, we have now reached, passed our time for our 10:30 break, so we are going to take a 10-minute break and come back at 11:00 a.m. Okay. Welcome back and from our, to our February 2nd Board of County Commissioners meeting. We are going to proceed with our agenda and take public hearing number one, request adoption of a resolution modifying each Martin County CRA plan and the countywide community redevelopment plan to update legal descriptions and maps, presented by Ms. Susan Kors.
Good morning.
Welcome.
Madam Chair and Commissioners. Susan Kors is Manager Office of Community Development. So Florida Statute 163.361 gives the governing body, i.e. the Board of County Commissioners, the ability to amend or modify any community redevelopment plan based on a recommendation by this Community Redevelopment Agency Board. They did so on January 25th. They unanimously voted to send a recommendation to you to amend each of the six community redevelopment area, community redevelopment plans, how many times can I say that? And the countywide community redevelopment plan, so we can update our legal descriptions and our maps to be consistent with the new Article 12 divisions 1 through 7. Those maps include future land use map, zoning, boundary, and the regulating plan. That's all I have.
Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Susan, thank you. Just curious, does this also involve the glitch stuff that we're going to do, or is that a whole separate issue?
So that's a full separate issue, Commissioner. This is just as we make changes and as we move through our vision plans, we need to make sure that everything that we want to do and are doing is represented in our redevelopment plan, because as per statute, we can't do anything that is not in there. So these kinds of updates are for community folks to be able to look at the plan and look at our land development regulations, and they would match.
So that, so I guess what I'm trying to understand, if there are things that we now know are glitches from all the work we just did over the last two years, that don't allow the community or whatever to do what we thought we were going to do relative to the work we did for two years, is that, is that really giving way to the glitch bill?
No, so they are two separate issues. These are maps.
Okay.
And legal descriptions that have already been adopted. So it's just a question, those will not change in the glitch bill.
Okay, so when do you all see coming to us with that, the fixes?
I believe we're scheduled for our first meeting in April and our adoption in May.
For the glitch stuff?
Yes.
Okay, can I make a recommend, is there something holding that back, meaning we still have more work to do, or is that just a time?
We've got to the CRA board with it. Our next meeting is in March with the LPA. So it's just a question of scheduling the meetings as they work.
Okay, I.
Through the boards that we need to go to.
Madam Chair, I'm a, I know this isn't the agenda item, so, but maybe when we're done with this, I'm going to make a recommendation that we ask staff to expedite that process. I don't want to lose, there are some projects that are waiting to happen that are clearly going to get caught up in some of this glitch stiff, stiff stuff, that aren't going to happen unless we fix some of the things that are in place, which is going to take six months if it's stuff that we have to fix. And so waiting till April is another three months from now, and I'd rather not, I'd rather see us expedite as quickly as possible to get that to the LPA, out of the CRA, and back to us. So I don't know what that takes to do that, but I just.
We can, if you like, Commissioner, we can look at what the, the projects are and figure out the timelines to make sure that they'll all work.
Okay, thank you.
I make a motion to accept staff's recommendation of this agenda.
Second.
Public hearing.
Public comment? Okay, being as that this is a public hearing, we will call for public comment on this item. Seeing none, then we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And Turning Woods, you had your light on? No, that's an old light. And Commissioner Smith.
Aaron, do you need me to make a motion to see that, no, I, no, well, sometimes we talk about like, we heard you, but.
We're paying attention. We're paying attention. We've got staff here too. Just be, Ms. Kors will have to check back with the.
Just asking, because I know what will happen. A month from now, I'll have this meeting, go, we never said that. So.
Thank you for your confidence.
Yes, you're welcome.
That's why you have the video.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kors. Ms. Dory?
Well, maybe this is, yes, just the other piece of that, the glitch bill, is there's a comprehensive plan amendment, text amendment that is coming forward as well.
I fully understand that. That's why I don't want to wait until April, because that will then take six months in that process. And, and I would rather not see everything pushed back three months just to get to where we have a discussion whether we should or shouldn't do that amendment.
Well, you have a, you're going to have on your agenda for next, your next meeting, a request to initiate the required comprehensive plan amendment, text amendment, so then it can go in, along with the timing related to the glitch bills.
But my, Madam Chair.
Yes.
My, my understanding, Krista, is that there are, whether we call it a glitch or whether we call it a comprehensive plan, whatever you want to call it, some of the glitches have to be fixed in the comprehensive plan amendment, regardless.
As well as in the land development regulations that are moving forward to allow some of these projects to move forward. Yes, and we're, we're cognizant of that, so I just, there are several pieces to this proposal.
I appreciate that, I'm just.
Okay, I understand, again, we understand. I just want to make sure that the facts are out there, so the board understands the pieces, the moving pieces in progress.
Have a light on Mr. Doolin.
Just, just to add one more note as far as timing, it's coming to you February as a consent agenda item, and we're going to the LPA also in February with the first hearing on the glitch bill issue, so we will not be waiting till April.
Okay, great.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
I'm sorry. Clyde Doolin, comprehensive planning administrator.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on now to a public hearing, quasi-judicial, number one, Baker Road LLC rezoning, presented by Matt Stanley, and this is an ex parte or quasi-judicial matter, so we will take ex parte disclosures from Commissioners. Commissioner Jenkins.
I don't believe I have any, but if I do, they've been filed.
Same if I have, they're filed.
If any might have been filed, Commissioner Campy.
I don't have any. If any, they've been filed.
Okay, does the applicant have return receipts?
Provided at the LPA.
Okay, are there any interveners?
No.
Okay, and we will do swearing in of witnesses. Mary Kay?
Raise your right hands, please. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. Stanley.
All right. Record Matt Stanley, Senior Planner, Growth Management. A copy of the agenda item, my work history.
Move up to the, yeah.
Oh, sorry. A copy of the agenda item and work history and the applicant's presentation has been provided. This is a request for a zoning district change from the R2 Single Family Residential District to the RM8 Medium Density Residential District. The approximate 0.55 acre undeveloped parcel is located at 322 Northwest Baker Road at the intersection of Northwest Charlie Green Drive and Northwest Baker Road and Stewart. Included in this application is a request for a certificate of public facilities exemption. The R2 zoning district is consistent with the medium density future land use designation. Therefore, the request to rezone this property is considered non-mandatory. I meant to show you this. I meant to show you this location first there. There are four standard Category A zoning districts that are available to implement the medium density land use policies of the Comprehensive Growth Management Plan, which are RS6 Medium Density Residential District, RS8 Medium Density Residential District, RM6 Medium Density Residential District, and RM8 Medium Density Residential District. In addition to the standard zoning district, the PUD district offers more design flexibility to applicants for proposed projects. In exchange, the district requires additional benefits to the county and more controls by the county. The Martin County Land Development Regulations provides the standards for amendments to the zoning atlas in Section 3.2 E2 of Article 3. A full analysis of the application of these standards to this rezoning request and specific subject site is provided in the attached staff report. Staff recommends that the requested RM8 Medium Density Residential District is an appropriate zoning district with respect to the application of the goals and objectives and policies of the comp plan, land development regulations, and county codes. This matter was heard at the January 21st LPA meeting where the LPA voted four to one for a recommendation of approval. And with that, staff recommends the board move to receive and file the agenda item summary and all of its attachments, including the staff report for the record as Exhibit 1, and move that the board approve the request to amend the Martin County zoning atlas to change the zoning district on the subject property from R2 Single Family Residential District to RM8 Medium Density Residential District or the most appropriate zoning district and adopt the resolution of approval. And that concludes my presentation. Glad to answer any questions.
Yes, Commissioner Hurd?
Yes, every adjacent use is R2 Single Family Residential?
That is correct.
And that allows just single family residential?
Yes.
What does RM8 allow?
It does allow for duplexes and townhomes, the multifamily component. However, the site being the size that it is, .55 acres, the eight units per acre would come out to a maximum of four units potentially, given they could meet all the LDR requirements.
Okay, I'm struggling with why, when the, when the, all the adjacent uses are single family, how you can justify that multifamily is compatible?
Well, I think the applicant's going to touch on some of that, but I think if you look at the properties adjacent to Long Baker Road, you're looking at densities comparable to the RM8 lot size of 5,500 square feet, or 75, I'm sorry. Yeah, 5,500 square feet, which is similar to RM8. The multifamily component, there's some of the properties along Baker Road that are operating as duplexes.
Thank you.
I, I have a question too. On your, I believe it's page 253, the, there's an RT. What is that?
That's a residential trailer or, yeah, right, yeah, residential trailer.
So mobile home, is the RT zoning? And then there's the RM8 just on the other side of Baker Road?
Yes.
And so what zoning would give four units per acre? If you said technically they wouldn't be able to put more than four units per acre once they meet all of the land development requirements, which zoning in here would be more along the lines of four units per acre?
Well, the RM, RS6 is the six units per acre. It's a medium density future land use, so in order to get to one of the ones that are compatible with the underlying future land use, you need to pick one of those four, which are either six units per acre or eight units per acre.
And this, I don't know if you have your cursor, this right here with this little brown block, that says RM8, correct?
Yes, right here.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I.
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Anybody else? Questions? Do you have an applicant presentation?
Hello, Deana Freeman here, representing the client for Baker Road Rezoning LLC. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, if Matt could load that. So we've got the request to change the zoning from R2 Single Family Residential to RM8. Next slide, please. There's the, the property in relation to Northwest Baker Road. To the west is US1 and a lot of this property is surrounded by land within the city of Stewart, which we're going to show you the next map. There with the blue dashed lines is the city of Stewart jurisdiction with the subject property off of Northwest Baker and Northwest Charlie Green Drive, as Matt's pointing out. Next slide, please. There's a site, it is vacant and unused. It is a, what we would consider an infill property. It is vacant and my client would like to incorporate duplex, which is why we're requesting the RM rather than the RS, up to four units on that property, which would be two duplexes, four units. Next slide, please. There we show that the, the property is surrounded by medium density residential land use to the east, west, and south of the property and to the north, there's a mobile home land use designation. Next slide, please. That's just a zoomed out picture, just to show you the site in red in relation to the surrounding area and the close proximity to the west to US1. And to the east is actually the city of Stewart, Community Redevelopment Area. Next slide. And this is the city of Stewart land use map. What it does show is you have got downtown, which is this community redevelopment area, which has a density allowed up to 30 dwelling units per acre. Next slide, please. There's a site zoning map with the R2, which is an old Category B zoning district. It does show as Chairwoman Heatherington pointed out, to the actual east is RM8, as one, which is the zoning that we're looking to do. RT to the north, which is residential trailer and then R2, an old Category B unplatted subdivision. Next slide. And that just shows a zoomed out area showing the wider area of the CRA, city of Stewart jurisdiction in all of the area, the aerials where there's no color on the map, just to show you the context of the location of this site. And there's the city of Stewart zoning. What I can point out, Avonlea RPUD is situated and shown in the brown, that's the area that I was talking about, can get up to 30 dwelling units per acre. Next slide, please. What I show here is the surrounding uses, what's important to note, and another slide in a moment we'll show you. The site to the immediate east of Charlie Brown, Charlie Brown, Charlie Green Drive is actually duplex. I found that out after the LPA, when I, on the property praises, it looks like it's single family, but when you actually drive the site and drive around, you identify that it's actually got two access driveways and it is operating as a duplex. It was built way before the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Regulations came into effect, so it's a historic duplex, but it does exist. And we've got the tennis courts to the west, multiple sized lots in residential use all around the site to the east and to the south, and a lot of land within city of Stewart jurisdiction and actually is conservation to a large extent. And then you've got the Avonlea mixed use PUD with RPUD, mixed use PUD, and also an industrial and commercial PUD further east. Next slide, please. What I did here is I provided an analysis, which, talking with staff about the various size of lots within this actual area, they, they do vary in size in terms of dwelling size and actual lot size. And what it also shows is, so where I've got number 14 on there, that's where the existing duplex is. Number 15 is actually two single family units within one lot. And then number 12 and 13, which is really further south, is actually an existing mobile home, multiple mobile home units. Next slide, please. I show here, just to zoom in on and do a street view, this is the duplex, it is the other side adjacent to the subject property off of Baker Road on the corner lot with an existing duplex and obviously very clearly two driveways. And it's a very small unit and it was built, I think it was built in the 1960s, so it is quite an old unit, but it is a duplex. Next slide, please. What I also show here is, this is a few more photographs of the same unit, just showing the distinction of the separate driveways. Next slide. And this is the mobile home part, the photograph taken from an aerial view with multiple mobile homes on that subject property further south, and it's indicated in blue on the aerial map. Next slide. So in summary, this is a request for RM8. It is consistent with the medium density residential land use. It would allow up to four units on the property based on the gross site, gross site area and the density. The request was considered to accommodate an infill development within an established residential community of similar scale and layout as is existing with the urban, within the urban area of the county. Northwest Baker Road is classified as a major collector road. The property owner is considering single family or duplex units on the property, favoring the duplex, which triggers the need for the RM8 rather than the RS8 zoning district designation. The size of the lot would accommodate up to two duplexes or four residential units. The request is consistent with a varied pattern of residential development in the area, including, as I just mentioned, multiple small lots, duplexes, two units, one lot further east and some mobile home units further south. Staff has reviewed and provided a recommendation of approval for RM8. Any future development proposal would be required to comply with all the development standards applicable in the Land Development Regulations. Signage was posted on the site. I did notice within 500 feet, we have communicated with staff at the LPA and before this meeting to confirm there's not been one objection from anybody within the community. Next slide, please, Matt. So the proposal is consistent with the comp plan and the LDR. Staff has made a positive recommendation. The LPA did make a recommendation of approval four to one at the January 21st public hearing. We therefore request approval of the rezone as the final action of the board to RM8, please.
Thank you. Commissioner Campy?
Thank you very much, Ms. Freeman. Very concise presentation, I appreciate that. It was not, I saw our presentation, but to see yours brings the whole situation into perspective and after public comment, I'd make a motion to accept staff's recommendation.
Any public comment on this item? Commissioner Smith?
I second Commissioner Campy's motion.
Okay. I do have one more question, and it looks like we have a question after that. Maybe this is a question for staff. Are, you're saying, you know, likely there's a duplex or a single family, but with the RM8, there, there could be an apartment building or townhome, is that?
Based on the density allowed, the maximum number of units would, the size of lots is going to limit the maximum number of units to four, based on the density allowed in that, in that zoning district.
So, okay, so regardless, if you, you're saying that the zoning is RM8, the maximum units.
That's correct.
Are four?
Yeah.
Then I guess I'm, I'm not understanding then, why would you not just put a, something, an RM6 or something on that?
Because at six units per acre, if you do a half acre, you're going to, you're not going to be able to meet the.
But with, with eight, with RM8, you can't meet that number of units. Am I not, if I'm not following something correct?
Yeah, you're having it because it's a, it's .55 acres.
I didn't hear it. I apologize. It gets complicated with all the different designations that were shown there. An R8 is eight units per acre. This is only a half an acre, so the max is four. If it was an R6, it's only half an acre, the max would be three. So she's getting an addition, potentially an additional unit after she meets all side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, everything else.
Yep. And RM8 requires an additional five foot of setbacks from the R2 zoning and 50% open space as opposed to.
Do you have any openings in staff that maybe Commissioner Campy could apply for? Be careful what you ask for. Okay, Commissioner Hurd?
Yeah, I'm not going to support the motion. It's clearly incompatible with all of the adjacent zoning districts, which are all R2, which only allow single family units. I recognize that there's a non-conforming use, but that's separate from what we should be recommending, which is compatibility with the existing neighborhood, the appropriate, perhaps if there's, if there was a recommendation for RS6, I could support that, but certainly not a multifamily designation.
Okay, we had a light on, staff? No. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, just a last thought. I think when you eventually see the plans that the city of Stewart has for the surrounding areas that they have annexed and brought into the city of Stewart, whatever is to be built here will be small in comparison to what's coming, I think.
Absolutely.
And I certainly don't have a problem with duplex. I just need a clarification, if there's something, you know, if, if would end up changing into something that was far more dense, but what you've said is there's a maximum of four units, two duplexes, so. Okay, I forgot who seconded the motion. Commissioner Smith made the motion?
Did I make a motion or second?
I made it. Commissioner Campy made it.
Commissioner Campy. Motion was made by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay. And then, okay, we are going to move on to departmental number one. Office of Management and Budget? Okay.
She was out in the hall.
She made you, she made you scoot up to the microphone, right?
Just to you. Sometimes you just miss the connection that happens to everybody. Before I was disparaged.
Good morning.
Good morning, colleagues.
We're having too much fun today.
Not really. Depends on who you are.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Jennifer Mannan, O&amp;D Director. I have seven items on the agenda. The first item is permission to apply to the State of Florida Health Department for Emergency Management Grant, matching grant, and it helps with the impact on the emergency services. It helps uninsured or little insured individuals and homeless in fall prevention. This is the second year of the program, it's for FY21, and the amount of the grant is $133,056.17 and requires a $33,000 match. It's hard to breathe in this thing. Okay, the second item is permission to, actually, this is the permission to accept this grant. I was talking to Matt earlier, and it's for the Narcan, for opioid addiction, and it helps to save lives. The third item is permission to apply to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Land and Water Conservation for Palm City Place. I was informed on Friday that the grant amount is, is now going to be 345,500, so that's what we're going to be applying for, and I just want to make that correction as well. And it requires a 282.
Yeah, can we, can we stop there?
Yes.
So it's 345 with a match of 345?
Yes, and that's.
So that's.
Yes.
What is this project?
Okay, I have, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm also on staff on this project. Palm City Place is the stormwater treatment and retention pond just north of the Palm City Fire Station on MAP Road, in between the fire station and Dr. Rexentel's office. Since these projects that are designed originally as engineering projects for either stormwater management or. City Fire Station on MAP Road, in between the fire station and Dr. Rex Centel's office. Since these projects that are designed originally as engineering projects for either stormwater management or water quality cleansing, especially considering MAP Road is so close to the river, we found that that location was so beautiful that we should try to incorporate some community involvement there. We are working on a walking path that will go around the entire perimeter of the lakes that are there. And then in the front corner, the front north corner closest to MAP Road where the Blasco House used to be located, we're going to put what we're calling the patio there. It'll be landscaping, but it'll have cement tables and chairs with the checkerboard motif on the top. It'll have a cement ping pong table, cement cornhole. There'll be a small, little, not really a gazebo, but a little kind of thing similar to the shade structures that they have if somebody wanted to play guitar or something. So it's a little community, as we are redeveloping the complete MAP Road-Palm City Center project there, this will give a little area, not a park, but a little area where people can come and recreate a little bit, walk around. There'll be some landscaping through there. Also, the sidewalk between Dr. Centel's building and the fire station, instead of being 10 feet wide, will be 20 feet wide to allow for the possibility of a street market or a green market. So it's designed to just, beyond just doing MAP Road over with on-street parking and landscaping and sidewalks and lighting and water quality and drainage, it'll give a little more of a reason to have an area to gather, if you will, for Palm City residents. And I'll be using a lot of my district funds there. We've got a lot of folks that were willing to put up very large donations for some of the amenities that are necessary. And I commend staff for reaching out for grant opportunities to, in this particular case, double our money.
So I don't see a CIP sheet here, but it sounds like this is niceties rather than necessities. We have drainage problems all over the county. We have massive drainage problems all over the county, and I can't support landscaping and ping pong tables and things like that in the face of extraordinary stormwater needs.
Well, I appreciate that very much. Thank you. The ping pong tables and the landscaping I'm going to use for district funds, and there's no CIP sheet, and I appreciate your concern that this is a nicety, not a necessity. To me, it is a stormwater treatment area. We are working on this. It's similar to my support when you came forward, I think, last meeting, for us to purchase the five acres next to Maggie Hammock, which I think is an excellent project. It came up because you saw an opportunity and presented it to the board for our consideration and support. This is similar to that.
Well, except that I used completely District Four funds, and this is utilizing how much Advalorm funds?
It's...
That's why I asked about a CIP sheet.
It would be the 345 coming from the CRA.
Correct. CRA. But that's why we're all up here. There's five of us because we have differences of opinion, but it's an excellent project.
Do we want to take this one out separately?
Sure. That'll work for me.
Do you want to...
I make a motion to accept agenda item...
Three.
Three.
With the additional change in...
With the 345, $345,000 approximately with the match.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on item three by Commissioner Campy, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Item three carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting. And, go ahead, continue with the last one, I think.
Item number four is permission to apply for the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Grant for FY '21. The amount, it's over a five-year period, and it's 125 per year, and it helps to bring awareness and training for mental health. Item number five is permission to apply to the In-N-Out Lagoon Council for Category One Water Quality Restoration Project Grant for Martin County Hope Heights and Jimmy Graham Park Water Quality Improvement. They're anticipating an amount of $150,000. The total project cost is $450,480, and requires a $300,480 match. The sixth item is permission to apply for the Florida Inland Navigation Grant for Boat Renovation at Sansford Park. We're requesting $300,000 and requires a match of $300,000, which was previously approved in the CIP. The final item is another OMB budget adjustment, and the Budget Department is requesting an approval of a budget resolution in order to allocate anticipated insurance proceeds to mitigate the agenda beach mooring field.
Can you explain this one more precisely?
Okay. I think George is here that can talk a little bit about it because, yeah.
I can talk about it. Commissioner, or Mr. Donaldson's here, too. We have filed a claim against the, we're working with the vendor in order to initiate. Rather than filing a claim, we anticipate that we will be able to work out an agreement. Right, Don?
Yes, right.
Your mic's off. I don't hear you.
The microphone?
Oh, there it is.
We can hear you.
Yeah, so we're currently working on a potential change order to rectify the issue with the dinghy dock did not meet the current requirements for servicing that area, and so that would be coming back. And if the, so this would provide, that's currently what we're negotiating right now, is a change order that would be, put the dinghy dock in there that would meet the full specifications, and so that would come in as a change order.
So this is a construction error? And whose error was it?
So we're currently negotiating that contract. In terms of determination, I can't point exactly the overall design. We had a designer for the county, we had a design-build contractor, and we had the staff involved in the approval process. So at this point in time, there is no particular element of assignment to any one individual at this time that I could say to, other than we do know that the product that was installed, which was a floating dock system that certainly meets, was constructed properly, but it did not meet the climate that it was put in. And so we're currently working on a resolution to that, and we're hopeful that that resolution will be done equitably between all partners. If not, then we have this insurance issue to deal with as well. So in terms of assigning responsibility, I'm not at a position at this time to tell you the exact assignment of responsibility. We've had our engineers look at it, had a third party look at it, and the contractors also, and their, and our other contractors that provided us the initial service have looked at it, and we're hopeful that we can resolve this again through a change order. If not, then it would be through other means.
And tell me how this is going to be eligible for insurance proceeds?
Well, we have insurance to cover damages, and this is in the event we get those insurance proceeds based upon our coverages, then we could apply them to the project, and this would give us preapproval to do that.
So meanwhile, the proposal is to spend $410,000 to rectify this problem, and where's the funding coming from?
So funding for to, well, ultimately, it'll either come through insurance proceeds as identified or through the capital funds.
And what's the revenue source?
It's a combination of revenue sources. I think boater fees are included in this project as well as other funds that were allocated. I can't enumerate all the funds, but it was an aggregation of funds.
But this is in addition to the monies that we've already spent?
It is.
So what are we displacing for $410,000 in order to rectify this new problem?
Right now, we've identified funds and fund balance to cover this, and so it would be future projects in your, it would be less money for future projects that have not, that would be presented to you this, for next year or beyond. So we're, right now, we're looking at our fund balance to be able to cover this in our capital program. With the hope that insurance proceeds would also cover it. And that is...
Okay.
That's where we're currently at. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Don. Commissioner Smith?
So with the approval of this, will this allow us to move forward and fix the issue?
Yes.
Okay. Because right now, Commissioners, we have an investment out there. We have a mooring field out there that we're not able to access, and until we get this moving, which we've already probably lost two or three months as a result of what's going on, we've got to get going, and Parks Department already has applications and bookings for the field. It's just a mere thing of getting it fixed. And if, I'm sure, if there's nothing more, do you have more, Jennifer?
No, this is the final item.
I move approval of the remainder items on the item.
Okay. We have a motion from Commissioner Smith for all those, all items except three, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Hurd dissenting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. We're going to move on to departmental number two, Contracts That Meet the Threshold For Board Approval, $1 Million or Greater, with Kristi Brotherington.
Ms. Brotherington is not able to be with us today. We had Katie Folks on deck, but we've got staff here, so I'll go ahead and get the items started.
George and Sam, which one of you want to do, Gomez Corridor?
While you're getting going, we're going to separate. It's item number one. Gomez Corridor. Is that correct, Attorney Woods?
Let me...
Where am I?
There's a recommendation for that.
I have to separate one out. I believe it's item number one, departmental number two, have to file an 8B, although as an employee of Ferrera, they were not recommended award. I will still recuse myself and separate that out, and I've filed the 8B with the clerk.
Hey. What number are you...
I believe that's item one. So we will vote on item one separately, and we can group the other items together if that's the board's pleasure.
So you want us to proceed now with number one first? Okay, go ahead, George.
Okay, so this is a recommendation to award the contractor, Hinterland Group, in the amount of $1,866,791.35. Hinterland Group chose...
George, can you state your name for the record?
Oh, I apologize. George Zama, Capital Projects Administrator, for the record. Do you want me to start over or...
No, go ahead. Proceed.
So Hinterland Group chose the local vendor preference, and this project is the Gomez Corridor Neighborhood Restoration Project, is the area in Hope Sound between, generally between Crossrip and Bridge Road along Gomez Avenue, areas east of US1. It includes drainage, pipe replacement, drainage, swale, regrading, and also the addition of new drainage pipe installation.
Okay. We want to...
No approval.
Okay.
Of number one.
Motion by Commissioner Hurd for number one, seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. I'll be abstaining. All those in approval?
Aye.
Aye.
So the motion carries four to zero, and myself abstaining. Okay. Number two.
Number two is Harbor Estates/Linden Street Neighborhood Restoration, and Mr. Zama's got that one, too, I think, in conjunction with utilities.
Yes, correct. So we worked with Public Works, worked with the Utilities Department for a joint neighborhood restoration and septic-to-sewer project. This project will encompass drainage improvements as well as force main installation in the Harbor Estates-Linden Street area, and this contract is to award the contract to PRP Construction in the amount of $1,075,000.
No approval. Second.
Okay. Was that the last item?
No.
No, the last item is a change order that has initiated for the Stewart Beach Seaside Cafe and restroom for $37,386.95.
And what is this?
This is coming out of District One MSGU Funds. It's an upgrade, if you will, to the facility and particularly the bar area, and will create a unique, almost art-like top, and Commissioner Smith is funding it completely out of his district funds.
Was that the last item?
Oh, I'm sorry. When everybody's staring at me, it's my turn, I know. The next one is Port Salerno/Numenrovia Septic-to-Sewer Conversion. This one, you've got Mr. Emerson here that can better explain it.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Sam Emerson, Utilities and Solid Waste Department. This is a continuing services contract. It'll be a next task order for Giffords-Webster Engineers. It's for the design and permitting of the Port Salerno/Numenrovia Vacuum Sewer System. It's proposed as a special assessment project included in the CIP, and this is for the engineering portion. It's designed to serve 952 parcels with sewer and 454 parcels with water.
That's it.
Okay. Great job. So did I hear a motion earlier?
Motion for the remainder.
You didn't? Okay. Commissioner Smith, motion by Commissioner Smith...
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Jenkins. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last agenda item of the day, departmental number three, is a quasi-judicial, requesting approval for modification of the dune preservation zone, oh, okay, for residents located at 1043 Southeast MacArthur Boulevard. And I will go ahead and take expertise disclosures by the Commissioners. Commissioner Jenkins?
I don't believe I have any, but if I do, they've been filed.
Commissioner Smith?
Same. I don't believe I do, but if they are, they're filed.
Same. I don't believe I have any. If so, they've been filed. Commissioner Campy?
I don't have any.
Commissioner Hurd?
If any, they've been filed.
Okay. Does the applicant have any return receipts?
None required.
None required? Okay. Any intervenors? No. And Mary Kay, would you like to swear in the witnesses?
If you could raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the evidence you are about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Go ahead and end with your presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Todd Warren. I'm a senior environmental planner in the Growth Management Department. I've been sworn in. A copy of the agenda item and my resume has been provided. Before you today is an approval request for modification of the dune preservation zone to accommodate construction of a residence, driveway, and a pool to replace a previously demolished residence at 1043 Southeast MacArthur Boulevard. The county's land development regulations provide, quote, "For those lands lying south of the Fletcher Beach access strip, the Board of County Commissioners may reduce the western limits of the dune preservation zone upon a determination that such a reduction shall not materially affect the preservation of the dune and that no total net..." not materially affect the preservation of the dune and that no total net loss of dune shall be allowed," unquote. This slide identifies the Fletcher Beach Access Strip and the location of the property, which is in that orange box to the, to the south of that. A zoomed-in version of that just shows approximately where the property is there, circled in red. The dune preservation zone is defined as a zone extending from the mean high water line of the Atlantic Ocean to a point being 50 feet westerly of the coastal construction control line, as enforced and effect on June 1, 1985. This map shows the location of the property, boxed in yellow there. The location of the coastal construction control line, that line being 50 feet west of the coastal construction control line. And the area highlighted in red there shows that the entire property, similar to all the adjacent occupied lots, are, is completely within the dune preservation zone. A sketch of the previous footprint of the house and driveway is shown in red and was previously 3,757 square feet in size. Superimposed is the footprint shown in black, is proposed to be 3,642 square feet, which is a net reduction of 93 square feet. The comprehensive plan has a policy that requires structures with repetitive damage to be rebuilt landward of its previous location. And as you can see, the proposed structure has been moved west to comply with this policy. Is that obvious in the presentation? You can see the previous structure is here, proposed, has been moved west. Because the new footprint of the house, or the proposed house and development encompasses an area in the dune preservation zone that was never developed, the applicant is here for board consideration to approve this additional 871 square feet that never existed in the dune preservation zone. And that 871 square feet of additional encroachment is shown in green on your slide. In summary, the proposed development will reduce the net encroachment into the dune preservation zone by 93 square feet. However, the proposed structure has been shifted west, excuse me. It encroaches slightly to the north, and a driveway has been designed to provide safer entry and exit onto MacArthur Boulevard. This request was evaluated by the Public Works Department, and they have determined that the development will not materially affect the preservation of the dune and the proposed development will not result in a net loss of the dune. Just reiterate that the proposed, proposed development will reduce encroachment into the DPZ by 93 square feet. Again, the proposed structure has been shifted to the west to comply with the comprehensive plan policy. Included in your agenda package and shown on the final slide is a recommendation to move that the board authorizes a reduction of the western limits of the dune preservation zone to accommodate the proposed residence, pool, and driveway with the following condition. Prior to certificate of occupancy for the development, prohibited exotic vegetation shall be removed from the dune preservation zone on the property and replaced with appropriately cited native dune vegetation. An alternative recommendation is provided also for your consideration. This concludes staff presentation. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer any of those. I think the applicant is, representative is here. I'm not sure there's a presentation, but that, if, I don't know if you have board questions first for me or if you want.
All right. Does anybody have questions for staff? And does the applicant have a presentation?
Good morning. I'm Kristen Spake, McCarthy Summers, representing the applicant, Dr. Rath.
Can you get a little bit closer to the mic, please? You're tall.
Thanks. Representing Dr. Rathakrishnan, the applicant. And thank you, Mr. Warren, for that presentation. I certainly can't improve on it. So I would like you all to hear from Dr. Rathakrishnan himself, just as far as what he wants to build out there for his new residence.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome. And please state your full name for the record.
Rungo Rathakrishnan. Hello. I moved to South Florida about 10 years ago.
Get a little closer to the mic.
And I live in Palm Beach County now. And I actually bought the lot from a woman who used to live there for about 25 years. And then she moved to California when the house was damaged in 2004. And so she demolished it. And so I bought the lot from her in about, in about September 2018. And the house that I designed with the help of my builder and the architect is going to be three stories. The living area is going to be about 2,978 square foot under air. And there's going to be a pool on the second floor. This way, the sand doesn't encroach and damage the pool and all that. And the first floor is going to be just the garage and the entryway. The second floor is the main living area and the pool. And the third floor is most of the bedrooms and the bathrooms. It's going to be like a Key West style house. And like a farm between a mixture of a farmhouse and a Key West style house. Not the modern type of house, which is built across a street, but more of a low-key, with decks facing the ocean on the second and the third floor.
Great. Well, thank you for that. Do you have a question? Okay. Commissioner Smith?
It's more of a comment. Welcome to Martin County. You're in my district, which is the best district of all the districts.
It's debatable, right?
Without even any debate, good Lord. You know, I remember when we lost that house. And that, and that was unfortunate that the storm did the damage that it did. But we were glad to see that someone like you has come forward to put something back there. I think of all the things that either staff asked you to do or that you did on your own, the driveway is probably the most significant because it can be a challenge sometime in regard there getting in and out. So please be careful once it's all done because it's, it's an ongoing sort of thing that we work with out there. But again, welcome to our, our county. Welcome to the community and to the best district in, in the five districts. And we wish you the most success with your project.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Welcome. And without add, move approval pending public comment.
Okay. Great. We have a motion, and you have a comment from Commissioner Campy?
Yes. To echo some of Commissioner Smith's comments. Welcome. We appreciate the fact that you are building and investing in our community. And from the District Five Commissioner, which we call the crown jewel of Martin County, if you have any equestrian or things like that, we have some property out by us as well.
But remember, the crown jewel is held by the, the gold that keeps it all in place in that District One.
Was, did the crown jewel second that motion? Okay. Okay. So we will now take public comment on this item. And seeing none, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Campy. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Welcome to Martin County.
Good luck.
And that brings us to the end of our agenda today. And we will take any kind of 505 public comment from the public. And seeing none, we will.
Zoom have any?
Does Zoom have any public comment? Okay. Nobody, nobody on Zoom. And Commissioner comments, Commissioner Jenkins?
Just remember, Art Fest in Hope Sound this weekend? Should be fun.
Great. Commissioner Smith?
All set. Thank you, ma'am chair.
Commissioner Campy? Commissioner Hurd?
And a reminder that on Thursday, we have a joint meeting at nine o'clock with the city of Stewart, the school board, and the Village of Indian Town. That's before our next February 16 meeting.
Okay. Ms. Woods?
Lake Library. We can't accommodate that crowd here.
Okay. In our upcoming meetings, as Commissioner Hurd just pointed out, we have February 4th on Thursday, the joint meeting. And February 16th will be our next regular Board of County Commission meeting. And with that, we are adjourned.